I'm here.
Councilmember Austin Lane, here. Councilmember Barry.
Present.
Councilmember Clay. Councilmember Simmons.
Present.
Councilmember Snipper.
Here.
Councilmember Wayne.
Here.
Um, Councilmember Clay is out of town and won't be joining us this evening. Are there any council comments or announcements? Bruce?
Um, just three things to note. Uh, one is that, uh, there was a very nice article in the Washington Blade issue of June 8th, uh, profiling Tacoma Park as a, uh, they call it, uh, gay suburban bliss. Tacoma Park remains a hip and charming neighborhood for gay residents. So I will, uh, give you a link to, uh, the article if you want to see it, but it's in the June 8th issue of the Blade.
Sounds good.
Um, and I just wanted to note that I'm not sure who gets these, uh, but I just got a, uh, the 2007 regional report of the Greater Washington Initiative and it's, uh, very interesting, uh, look at the Washington region and where things are and where they'll be for the next five years. So, uh, do people get those or not?
I don't remember how they've seen it.
Okay. I will try and get additional copies and get them to you because it's very interesting.
Okay.
And, uh, then-
You did?
You did?
Yeah.
Okay. Um, then just wanted to note that, uh, the mayor and city manager and I were at a very interesting, uh, meeting on Thursday night, which was the Council of Governments State and Local Partnership Dinner. Uh, it's, uh, something that, this was the second year of doing this and trying to get, uh, regional officials, uh, on both the, uh, local and state level together to talk about issues of, uh, concern and commonality. And the, uh, this particular one was on the, uh, climate change and how all of us can work together and it, uh, dovetailed very nicely with what the, uh, what some of our Committee on the Environment folks are doing about climate change and, uh, the new, uh, group that's been put together at Cog. So, uh, there look like, there looks like there's some good opportunities for, uh, working on that on a, uh, regional what level, state level, local level, uh, all at once. So, uh, there should be some interesting issues brought forth in the next few months on that.
Okay.
Thank you, Mayor Porter. I just wanted to take a minute to remind people that there's a tenant leadership, uh, meeting tomorrow evening at 7:00 PM here at the municipal building or at the community center. I'll show my age. At the community center here at 7:00 PM tomorrow night, uh, and all tenants from Tacoma Park are invited.
Okay. Anybody else?
Couple of things. Um, one is, uh, the county celebration of, um, Juneteenth is coming up this week. It's Tuesday night, uh, tomorrow night at Black Rock Center and, as people know, that's, um, celebrating the end of slavery, um, starts at 7:00 PM. Um, I was, uh, the, the other thing I wanted to make the council aware of, and you may have noticed in the, um, Washington Post that, uh, Lou Morris and his family and the, uh, epic dragon sculpture on Tulip Avenue was featured, um, along with Jim Calder, the, uh, sculptor. And I was so happy that, uh, my family and I could be there yesterday as they had a, a naming ceremony. Um, I won't attempt to tell you the name in Chinese, but it's, uh, River Dragon in, um, English. And, uh, it's really a neat, uh, a neat community building, um, thing that the Morris family has done and, um, I thanked them, uh, very strongly yesterday. I don't know if people have had the occasion to, to drive down Tulip Avenue, but, uh, please do so, um, when you're able and enjoy the sights at the corner of Holly and Tulip. Um, it's a 16-foot oak tree that came down partially and, um, and a dragon has been carved in that with a, um, what was going to be a pearl on top, but then they turned it into a, a globe. Um, so, uh, and the, the dragon has ebony eyes and Hollywood for, for teeth inserted. It's really neat. So, anyway, just, uh, one more way that, that Tacoma Park, um, residents express their love of public art and, uh, I think the, the council's commitment to, um, public art and the Arts and Humanities Commission is very appropriate because of that.
You forgot to mention, the Tacoma Park Crossroads Farmer's Market grand opening will be-
I'm gonna let you do that.
-this Wednesday. Oh, thank you. Thank you very much. Uh, we're gathering with the mayor, uh, and other dignitaries at 6 o'clock on Wednesday. This will be the formal opening of the Farmer's Market. There was a great, uh, article in the Washington Post in the food section last week, uh, two pages of color photos and descriptions of the different farmers who were there. It's quite a colorful spectacle and we're happy to say that after that article, uh, attendance was substantially up for the second week, which was last week, and we expect a big crowd on Wednesday at 6 o'clock. Hope you all can come by. Uh, the market's open from 4 until 7, uh, and it really is a lot of fun and some great vendors there and some great food. Hope you can all join us.
Okay. Thanks. Anyone else? I just wanted to remind, uh, the council and the other, uh, folks in attendance that the council will not be meeting next Monday. Um, several members of the council will be attending the MML convention, um, but we will be meeting in July and for the council's information, I think you should count on our meeting to meet all five Mondays in July. Uh, we have a great deal of, uh, work we still need to do before the recess and, um, I would just encourage the council not to make vacation plans with the assumption that the, we will not be meeting the fifth Monday in July because in all likelihood we will. So, and as a matter of fact, um, with the way things are looking, we may be having our second and final vote on rent stabilization that evening, so that would be a very important council member, council meeting to be attending. So just wanted to bring that to everyone's attention. Um, the next item on the agenda is the public comment period. Uh, this is the time set aside on the agenda for items that are not on our special session agenda. If you want to comment on a special session item, we'd ask that you would, um, uh, save your comments until we get to that item. When you come forward, we'd ask if you would identify yourself and if you'd keep your comments to three minutes. Thank you. Any, uh, public comments this evening? Yes, at, at the, at the podium.
My name is Sue Wheaton. I live at 7211 Spruce Avenue. It's good to be back here. I haven't been in several years, but a very compelling issue brings me forth and that is to support, uh, Ruben Snipper's, uh, resolution for, it's supporting impeachment of the President and Vice President of the United States. I, uh, am very proud to see that this has been introduced, that there is growing momentum for it and come to encourage you to pass that resolution. I, uh, have noticed the growing, in conversations with people, to me it's just very urgent because I feel we must stop this administration from the things that are making this a more and more dangerous situation for ourselves and people abroad. And therefore, and, and the most, uh, much more effective way to voice our concerns as citizens are through our elected bodies, not just as individuals calling our congressperson. Of course, we do that too, but for our cities of which the latest count I got, and I, it's probably grown since now, there are 62 towns and cities that have passed such resolutions and including large cities like Detroit and San Francisco and I'm sure many smaller cities like ours. This is an expression of the people's voice. There are also, uh, growing numbers of like state democratic parties that are passing such resolutions and they're being introduced in legislatures around the country. So I come to speak for that. I'm glad to see my old friend and fellow federal employee, uh, Ruben. I don't know if he still is or not, but, uh, glad to see that you're, you're carrying that, uh, forward and, um, just, uh, want to, I strongly encourage you to do that on our behalf.
Uh, thank you. Uh, for your information and the information of anyone else who might be interested, um, we, I am trying to schedule it, uh, at some council meeting during the month of July. Um, I am meeting actually next, uh, tomorrow afternoon for my weekly agenda meeting with the city manager and the city clerk. And we have a great many issues to try and fit into the July meetings as I alluded to before, but we are trying to make this one of the things that the council addresses prior to our, uh, recess for August. So we will be trying to get this on the agenda and as soon as we have a date, um, we will let everyone know. Anyone else?
Hi, I'm Thomas Nephew. I live on 7300 Purge Avenue and I'm also here to support the impeachment resolution that Councilman Snipper has sponsored. I've collected signatures on behalf of this, the Farmer's Market, and I can tell you that the response in the city is very positive, but there've also been some questions that deserve answers, including, uh, why bother and what good will a city council resolution do? And I thought I'd try and explain why I think it's important. The short answer, I think, is summed up by the counter question, what if we don't even bother?
All right.
There have been, um, many terrible precedents set by this administration, the, the sin and crime of torture, a fraudulent case for war, abrogation of habeas corpus, warrantless surveillance, indirect defiance of specific law, uh, king-like disregard and contempt for other laws that have been properly passed and signed and a refusal to enforce those laws. Each of those are enough grounds for impeachment and there are more and together they add up to an administration that must be opposed. Its very policy is to flout the constitution, the laws designed to control it. But also unless we act now, the next administration like this one can take its lawless and amoral and unconstitutional approach as a consensus starting point instead of a shame on this country and a reproach to its institutions. And so that's where we come in. I think that the first three, well, the first three words of the constitution are "we the people." We ordain and establish the constitution. We're responsible for it. We here in this room and you are elected leaders as well. To echo a certain president's father, these aggressions will not stand. They must at least not stand unopposed. So I think we absolutely have to do this. I want to be able to tell my little girl years from now that we tried and of course I'd like even more to say that we won. So thank you all for considering this resolution and the opportunity to speak to you about it and to all of you who vote for it. I'm sure you'll have many other important achievements, but I think this will be the finest thing you ever do in public office. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hi, my name is Katie Berchstrom. I'm here to show, to voice my support for impeaching both the President and the Vice President. I'm a resident of Germantown, Maryland, but I spend about half my time here, um, visiting with my girlfriend, Michelle Bailey. Um, I really, even though I'm not a resident of Tacoma Park, I really, I actually take pride in the city of Tacoma Park and hope one day to live in this city when I'm able to. And I think as a resident of a city that's not as politically active and what I see is politically cohesive just in its residents, that Tacoma not only supporting an impeachment, um, petition would be doing something positive for the country, but really just being an example for cities like Germantown that I don't see a lot of activism going on for things that the residents believe in. Um, so I really just think, I, I spend a lot of my time in Tacoma. I shop at all of the stores in Tacoma. I go out of my way to come here because I really do take pride in the way this city runs and would really like it to continue doing that by supporting impeachment. Thank you.
Thank you.
Robert Lanza, 7215 Cedar Avenue. I'd like to point out a couple of things concerning impeachment. The first thing I'd like to point out is that last month Congress overwhelmingly voted to support the Iraq War, including members of the Maryland delegation, including Senator McCulkey and Senator Cardin. If you're going to have a resolution concerning impeachment, you should also be calling on the Maryland congressional delegation to reverse their support for Bush's war and oppose it and vote like they oppose it. The other thing I'd like to point out is that if you're going to pursue impeachment, the resolution should explicitly say that Vice President Cheney be impeached and removed from office first. Otherwise, Chief Justice Roberts would simply swear Vice President Cheney and as President Cheney. I'm sure no one in this room wants Vice President Cheney to be president, even for 24 hours. So I would explicitly put that in the resolution, that Vice President Cheney be removed from office first and then President Bush be removed from office so that neither one of them can pursue any of their policies. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hi, I'm Colleen Cordis and I've lived at 500 New York Avenue since 1986 and I'm also here to speak in favor of the resolution to impeach Vice President Cheney and President Bush. I agree with the order. And, um, the big issue for me, I just happened to be walking by the subway and ran into this effort, but I just so strongly, the torture issue is the one for me because, um, you know, said, growing up saying the Pledge of Allegiance with, um, justice and liberty for all, uh, I mean, it just, it just strikes at the very core of what America is about. And I have, um, just a couple of things I think are so strong, uh, from Sunday's paper, there was a story about the Army two-star general who led the first investigation into the abuse at Abu Ghraib prison. He believes senior defense officials were involved in directing abusive interrogation policies and says that he was forced to retire early and he was shunned and made fun of by Rumsfeld and others when he complained about it. And he says, "I know that my peers in the Army will be mad at me for speaking out, but the fact is we violated the laws of land warfare in Abu Ghraib. We violated the tenets of the Geneva Convention. We violated our own principles and we violated the core of our military values. The stress of combat is not an excuse and I believe even today that those civilian and military leaders responsible should be held accountable." And I think that what happened with the Military Commissions Act in November, they tried to cover their asses and they tried to make sure that all those, everyone responsible for the war crimes, all the way up, would not have to suffer the penalty. So I think that we can see that Congress has been intimidated by the president and by the whole national security apparatus and that it's, it's the place of local governments like Tacoma Park who don't suffer the same intimidation to stand up and create some groundswell so that Congress understands the people are behind this. And, um, thank you all so much for serving on the Council of Tacoma Park, which is a great city.
Thank you.
I'm Nina Falk. I live, uh, on Cedar Avenue, 7303 Cedar Avenue, and I'm also here to support, um, a resolution to impeach the Vice President and then the President. I agree with everything that everyone has said. I'm particularly proud of my neighbor, Thomas Nephew, and all his points. Um, for me, it, it's, it's very, very broad. It started, of course, with the first day that, um, these people took office. I think, um, of the people in other countries and how when, when their rights are taken away, sometimes they just take to the streets and they go and they just insist on being heard. I feel like we've gone to so many demonstrations and yet he just does whatever he wants. And I feel like calling for impeachment could be the very least we could do. You know, I, every day that I live, which I just love my life and have, what right do I have to walk and enjoy the flowers when I know that, you know, halfway around the world, this carnage is happening in our name? So I would be very, very grateful if this is carried forward. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hi, I'm Michelle Bailey, Sherman Avenue, and I just have a quick update on the news that we scooped this past week, uh, on impeachment. Um, we now have eight. We have Rep. Maxine Waters of California became the eighth co-sponsor to, uh, Kucinich's bill to bring articles impeachment against Vice President Cheney. Um, another thing I wanted to tell everybody, that we just put the Jamie Raskin video up on our website and that was about a week and a half ago. We've had almost 500 hits on that so far. So I know that people were watching that. Um, last week I mentioned that Alexandria is working on a similar resolution for impeachment. Well, now we can also say Charlottesville. Tonight, there, uh, some activists are meeting with their council members in Charlottesville and they're considering a similar resolution. So Virginia, are they gonna beat us on this? We really gotta get this going, so. I think, uh, they might, it, I think there's about 80 cities. I've read different reports, but you read 62 or something a couple of weeks ago. So the cities are adding up and, uh, I know that we can, we can really do this here in Tacoma Park. I just also want to mention that this Saturday at George Mason University, they're hosting a grassroots town hall forum called Should Impeachment Be on the Table? It's from 1:00 to 4:00 at the Mason Hall Conference Center and I know I'm going and a, a number of us are also all going and it, there, I have a flyer on that with who all the speakers are if anyone's interested. And we'll also post that on our website, tacoma park, uh, IBC dot wordpress dot com. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hi, everybody. I'm Mark Hessel, speaking on behalf of landlords in Tacoma Park about the rent control issues. Tonight's issue on the agenda has to do with how many units, uh, facilities of a certain size containing however many units should be exempt. I see tonight's discussion as highlighting the fact that after almost a year and a half of this particular round of trying to do, uh, something to revise the rent control statute, that all the council's really doing for the most part is rearranging furniture. The council has not, after all this time, really come up with a justification for making the landlords pay for all the affordable housing that rent control provides. Uh, still, uh, Councilmember Snipper commented a few weeks ago about, uh, having a means test for landlords, who should get certain benefits and who shouldn't. But we still don't have any kind of means test at all for the people who receive, uh, these benefits that the landlords are paying for. There's been no analysis of what it actually costs a landlord to operate a, uh, rental facility in Tacoma Park. How can you possibly spend a year and a half on this subject and not look at an issue like that? Uh, the whole process, particularly in the last couple of months, has kind of been avoiding these real issues. That's why I'm saying all that's happening here is that the furniture is getting rearranged. And there's been no effort to pursue alternatives. We, city pays, uh, good money, I don't know how much, to have Ken Barr travel here several times and work on drafting legislative language, but as far as I know, there's been no money spent on people who could say, here's how you could really do affordable housing, other ways, ways that maybe work better and are less expensive for all concerned than what the rent stabilization statute does. Um, I would suggest that tonight you create exemptions for as many units as the council can justify in any way. Because rent control really is not justified. It's nice that there's all this affordable housing in Tacoma Park. It's really nice and it's important, but you haven't addressed the substantive issues of who's supposed to pay for it and why should a landlord who has 10 four-unit buildings or 15 two-unit buildings be treated differently from a landlord who has a 20-unit building? You've got about, I guess, after tonight, maybe five council sessions before you want to have a second vote on this statute. We haven't seen any legislative language yet. If you look at the current statute, it is convot, it's terribly written, there are holes all over the place. I personally guarantee you that when the new statute comes out, there will be a lot of little holes because trying to justify everything that you're doing with rent control is like holding water in your hands. You squeeze two fingers together and it leaks out somewhere else.
Mr. Hessel, can you, uh, summarize?
Uh, no, there's no summary to this, but I've said what I need to say.
Okay. All right. Thank you. Uh, is there anyone else that would like to speak? All right, if there's no one else, we'll move on to the city manager's comments this evening.
Uh, just two brief items. I wanted to just update the council from the discussion last week about the Independence Day festivities and Councilmember Simmons may want to add something to this. Um, I did receive a voicemail message, uh, this afternoon from Belle Zegor indicating that she had identified a platform that I guess we could borrow rent from Park and Planning at a fairly nominal cost. I believe it was approximately $350. Um, the Independence Day Committee is also continuing to try and identify, um, a reasonable awning that they could purchase perhaps through eBay or some other alternative, thinking that that might be more cost-effective in the long run. Is there anything else, Councilmember Simmons, you want to add on this?
No, I'll just say that the canopy that they're looking at, uh, right now is about 13 by 26 feet. It has, uh, uh, it's an awning with the top, but it also has removable sides so it could be used for other things besides just to re, to cover the reviewing stand. And, um, the, uh, the price range is, uh, well under the $1,000 that we had talked about earlier.
Thank you. Um, the last item that I just wanted to mention is to note that there was an article in, I believe it was last Wednesday's edition of the Washington Post, dealing with the database that is used by law enforcement agencies, um, across the country, including the Tacoma Park Police Department, which is the National Crime Information Center database. And this is something which is, um, run by the FBI. That article has sparked a lot of questions, I think some concerns from some segments of the community about how exactly, um, our police agency's use of that database might tie into the city's sanctuary law. Um, I did want to share with the council and with the community that at no time during the traffic stop that is referenced in the article, did the officer inquire about the individual's immigration status. I do recognize however that there are other questions that were prompted by the article and just wanted to share with the council that I'll be meeting later this week with the city attorney and with the police chief to sort of review these issues. Um, obviously this is a very complicated matter, um, and I don't profess to be an expert in all the nuances of it, which is why I want to meet with the chief and with the city attorney. Um, I do plan to report back to the council, um, probably after the, um, MML conference or hopefully the next meeting in July.
I, I think the, uh, two questions that come to my mind in regard to the, uh, the national database is, uh, at what point did the city become aware of, uh, who was the agent, you know, which agency had the warrant, um, for the arrest of the individual and at what point in time did we become aware of what the charges were that the warrant, uh, specified?
We'll be sure to, uh, include, uh, responses to your questions, Councilmember Simmons.
Thank you.
Yeah. Could I get an update on the Safe Tacoma Initiative?
Uh, the last, uh, information I think that we had, Councilmember Austin Lane, was, um, the meeting that I believe you attended, which was the stakeholders. Um, I've not yet had an opportunity to touch base with Gail Fisher Stewart, but I think as the chief had indicated, I believe it was last week, I'm not positive about that, um, is that the group is working on drafting a job description for the community organizer.
Um, I, I'd really appreciate the city taking the lead on this because, um, the, the district has, uh, in good faith, um, allocated money for this. The city council has allocated money for this, um, probably more than a year ago now and it, it's, it's just, um, it, it's taking too long for us to wait on other people. I, I really think that, um, there is the community support for this, there is the, um, budgeted amounts for this and we really need to move forward. It's, um, uh, there's no one we can point fingers at but ourselves on this one. So I hope that, uh, very soon we can, um, put out that, uh, call for, um, a coordinator and, um, a position description, uh, could easily be forthcoming from the experience the city has had with SeaSafe. I hope that will happen. Any other questions for the city manager? Um, if not, we will move on. We have two interviews this evening. Uh, the first one is, uh, Norine Wells. If you could, uh, come up to the table here. I know that you have, um, represented us on the, and I'm gonna get the two, the various cable-related advisory groups confused, but this is the one that is, um, the Board of Directors for Montgomery Community Television, which is the community access.
That's correct.
And I know you've also had long association with the cable channel.
Yes.
And, um, the, the question we, I normally start with is to ask people, uh, why they're interested in this position. I think in your case, we- I think, in your case, we probably know much of the answer, but I'll give you the opportunity to address that question and anything else you might want to tell us.
First off, I saw that the position became open, and the CCAC, the Cable and Communication Advisory Committee, has, I've had a lot of interest in it because I have a deep abiding interest in PEG stations. And recently, or within the past year, there has been a shift across the country to, when possible, the telecommunications industry is removing the PEG channels. And I think the only way one can do it is to just do battle. And I know we don't have a representative on the CCAC at the moment, which is why I'm deeply interested in this. And listening tonight to individuals voicing their concern about various issues is just, that to me, that's PEG.
Right.
That's the G of PEG, and very important. And the fact that I frequently have had a class on Monday nights, but I click in later on in the week to see what's happening here, and that could disappear. And I just am very strong about not letting that happen.
Well, I agree with you that that's an extremely important issue, and I'm very pleased that someone with your experience is willing to represent us. I don't know, do other members of the council have any questions? I think that you are probably a very capable person for this position, and I'm very delighted that you're willing to do it.
Thank you.
And we'll go ahead and, I'll go ahead and schedule the appointment as soon as I can, but we appreciate your interest.
Thank you. I have told Lonnie that until someone is found for MCT, and I'll help her look, then I'll double, just to, so I can keep her aware of anything.
Okay, I appreciate that. I appreciate it. Appreciate your commitment to that very important issue. It really is public information and people's ability to be involved and know what's going on in the community.
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you.
The second interview is Joshua Wright for the Health Services Impact Committee. And I believe that you were, weren't you present at the public forum that the committee held?
I've been to a number of the meetings. I don't think I was actually at the public forum, but I've gone as a citizen to a number of the meetings that the committee has held so far.
Okay, well, it must have been some other meeting. Do you want to just briefly talk to us about your interest in the Health Services Impact Committee?
Sure, Mayor Porter. For me, I see Washington Adventist leaving, or they're impending departure from the community, at least in some part, as a major issue for Tacoma Park. The hospital provides major healthcare services to people in the community. They also provide jobs, and it's a significant piece of land in the middle of our community also. And I know right now the committee's not dealing with the future planning for that site, but it is something we've talked a little bit about. And I'm very concerned about this issue, and want to be engaged in making sure that we take this thing as not a problem, but as an opportunity. And at times to say, okay, this is an opportunity to take stock of the health services within the community, and try and get something that is at least as good, if not better, than what we have now in terms of health services within Tacoma Park. And I think, from my understanding of the issues, that Adventist is at least entertaining at this point the possibility of leaving certain functions behind. And I think, in working with the community, we're working on a survey now, and getting out and talking to members in the community, I think we have a good opportunity to make sure that the right services remain here to continue to serve the community. As well as, I think it will give us an opportunity to look and say, okay, what do people say that they need in terms of health services? And maybe an opportunity to attract other health service providers to the Tacoma Park area.
I think, I think those are all good points. We are actually, I'm trying to, among the many things I'm trying to schedule before the council's recesses, an update discussion with the committee. And one of the items on that discussion would be the issue that you alluded to about whether we want to have two committees or one to handle this issue. And the council will be discussing that, as well as, I know the committee wanted to talk a little bit about the survey, too. So I do appreciate that. Anyone else have comments or anything they'd like to ask?
I would just like to thank you, not just for volunteering for this committee, but for your enthusiasm for, you know, participating in community affairs, and also for your kind of studied way of going about it and looking at the various committees and the opportunities that are available, and kind of picking the one that you think is where you best fit. And I certainly have no argument with your selection. I think it's an important committee, and I'm really glad to see you volunteer for it. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Austin.
Any other questions from the panelists?
Just want to thank you for your willingness to serve. I'm so lucky to represent Ward One, where we have talented people who see a need and offer their services. So thank you also to Noreen, and I look forward to making these appointments.
Thank you, Councilmember Austin.
Well, thank you very much. I will, we're going to go ahead and try and schedule this appointment, too, as soon as we can. And thank you for your willingness and your interest in volunteering.
Thank you.
Thank you. We are now moving on to our special session items. We have, as we had when we dealt with it the first time, the first one that's going to come up is the ordinance establishing the tax rate for fiscal year 2008. The proposed tax rate is 61 cents per $100 of assessed value, which is 2 cents lower than the current tax rate.
Move the ordinance.
Okay. It's been moved and seconded. Are there any council comments on the tax rate issue?
Mayor Porter, I thank you. I just wanted to say that, you know, I've really struggled this year with our budget, and we're going to go through several ordinances tonight related to the budget. And I've, I've even toyed with voting against our actions, but as I, as we've gone through the budget process, I've been frustrated with just the whole way we go about it and the type of information we use in making our decisions. But on the other side, I've heard very little feedback from the community in opposition to the various things that we've talked about here with the budget. So I'm kind of, at this point, reluctantly supporting the budget, but I'm also very excited and enthusiastic and glad to hear that we are going to be addressing these issues as we move into the coming year. And I fully expect that next year, our budget process will be different. I think the council is, is going to work together to see how we can do this job in a better way in the coming years. And I thank my colleagues and the mayor for scheduling those discussions. And so I, I am going to support this and the other budget ordinances tonight.
Okay. Anyone else? Are there any public comments on the ordinance establishing the tax rate? Seeing none, this is the second reading, so will the clerk please call the roll?
Mayor Porter.
Aye.
Councilmember Austin Lane.
Aye.
Councilmember Barry.
Aye.
Councilmember Clay.
Aye.
Councilmember Siemens.
Aye.
Councilmember Snipper.
Aye.
Councilmember Williams.
Aye.
The ordinance passes its second reading. Before we take up the next ordinance, we need to set ourselves as the stormwater management board. Does someone want to move that the council begins sitting as the stormwater management board?
Sort of.
Okay, it's been moved and seconded. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? The council is now sitting as the city council and the stormwater management board. As the second entity, we can take up the ordinance approving the stormwater management budget, which includes also the stormwater management fee of $48 per unit per year, for the coming fiscal year. Does someone want to move the ordinance?
Certainly.
Okay, it's been moved and seconded. Any council comments on the ordinance? Any public comments on the ordinance? Of course, with all of these ordinance, this is the culmination of several weeks of council discussion of the entire budget, so we may be talked out at this point. All right, seeing none. This again is the second reading of the ordinance. Will the clerk please call the roll?
Mayor Porter.
Aye.
Councilmember Austin Lane.
Aye.
Councilmember Barry.
Aye.
Councilmember Clay.
Aye.
Councilmember Siemens.
Aye.
Councilmember Snipper.
Aye.
Councilmember Williams.
Aye.
The ordinance passes its second reading. And the final, well, not the final, the third of the ordinances we will be taking up is the ordinance approving the budget for fiscal year 2008.
Move the ordinance.
Okay, it's been moved and seconded. Any council comments on the budget? We should note that there has been a slight change since first reading. I imagine the city manager, I didn't compare number to number, but I'm assuming that the change that we discussed, which was the incorporation of funding to move the senior recreation programs manager to a full-time position, has been included.
Yeah, there was $25,000 added to the Recreation Department budget, based on the council's discussion last week. I would note that the coordinator of senior recreation programs is not a full-time position. It will be a 30-hour-a-week part-time position, which does make it eligible for benefits.
I'm sorry, I misspoke. I think of 30 hours as being almost full-time, more full-time. Okay, is there any council comments, any further council comments, since we've had a month of discussions on this? Any further council comments on the budget? Any public comments on the budget? All right, seeing...
[inaudible].
No, we're talking about the budget right now. We haven't, we haven't gotten to the, to the rent issue yet. Any public comments on the budget? If not, will the clerk please call the roll?
Mayor Porter.
Aye.
Councilmember Austin Lane.
Aye.
Councilmember Barry.
Aye.
Councilmember Clay.
Aye.
Councilmember Siemens.
Aye.
Councilmember Williams.
Aye.
Okay, the budget passes its second reading also. The next item up is the ordinance setting the pay scales for staff who are covered by the AFSMI collective bargaining agreement.
Sort of.
Second.
Okay, it's been moved and seconded. Are there any council comments on this ordinance? Any public comments on the ordinance? All right, seeing none. This is the second meeting of this ordinance also. The clerk please call the roll.
Mayor Porter.
Aye.
Councilmember Austin Lane.
Aye.
Councilmember Barry.
Aye.
Councilmember Clay.
Aye.
Councilmember Siemens.
Aye.
Councilmember Williams.
Aye.
The ordinance passes its second reading. We now take up the second of the pay plans, which is for the management staff and the staff who are not covered by the collective bargaining agreement. Does someone want to move the ordinance?
Sort of.
Okay, it's been moved and seconded. Any council comments on this ordinance? Any public comments on the ordinance? All right, seeing none. Will the clerk please call the roll?
Mayor Porter.
Aye.
Councilmember Austin Lane.
Aye.
Councilmember Barry.
Aye.
Councilmember Clay.
Aye.
Councilmember Siemens.
Aye.
Councilmember Snipper.
Aye.
Councilmember Williams.
Aye.
That ordinance also passes its second reading. And the third of the pay plan ordinances is for the pay scale for police officers for fiscal '08.
Certainly.
Second.
Okay, it's been moved and seconded. Are there any council comments on the ordinance? Any public comments on the ordinance? All right, seeing none. Will the clerk please call the roll?
Mayor Porter.
Aye.
Councilmember Austin Lane.
Aye.
Councilmember Barry.
Aye.
Councilmember Clay.
Aye.
Councilmember Siemens.
Aye.
Councilmember Williams.
Aye.
All right, that is the third of the three pay plan ordinances, so we have passed now the budget and the pay plans that come after the budget. We're now moving on to a resolution which authorizes the legislative action requests to the Maryland Municipal League. And thank you, Wayne Hobbs, for, for working on all of those numbers and sitting through many of our budget discussions, too.
The resolution before you authorizes transmittal of the legislative action request to the Maryland Municipal League for the year 2008. And this is done every year to give the Maryland Municipal League ideas for what it would pursue as its priority legislative action items for the coming state legislative session. The requests are supposed to be something that generally are attainable and are something that affects and would benefit many municipalities across the state. There's a legislative committee that reviews the various proposals and makes recommendations as to the ones that the Maryland Municipal League should adopt. That final discussion and decision is made by representatives of the municipalities in the Fall Conference. We do have the Maryland Municipal League Convention coming up this coming weekend and next week. After we discuss this, I would like to urge those of you who are attending to use that opportunity to start promoting some of these ideas, because I think from my preliminary discussions about the two proposals here, it may take some, a little bit of push with the lack of some forceful leaders this year, and I think we need to rise to that occasion. The two proposals we discussed before at the, at the meeting of June 4th are to put in again the electrical energy aggregation as a major effort. This is one that's been put in for a number of years. It's been a priority two of the last three years for MML, and each time it almost makes it. This year, well, at the end of last year, the final legislation kind of cut us out, but there's a lot that needs to be worked on to make that legislation work. And I think that there's a real opportunity through that tweaking process of getting a real energy policy and regulation policy, that there'd be a real opportunity for the municipalities to have an aggregation authority. The second item is to urge the development of legislation to broaden municipal revenues as a major priority. And the way that I've drafted the resolution is different than in the past years, which called for almost a specific type of bill. This calls for not only legislation that would broaden, legislation, that would broaden municipal revenues possibilities, but it also says, even before it gets to that point, let's be involved in the process. Let's establish within the Maryland Municipal League a permanent subcommittee to the legislative committee that looks at revenue as an ongoing function. And so that's how I've drafted the resolution. I'm open for any revisions. But I think that when I called the MML offices to confirm that I had the right name of the subcommittee, et cetera, there was some hesitance about that, and I think they're not really sure what role that subcommittee would play. It was my understanding from the discussion that we had, and this is what I said, that this would be a, a subcommittee that would not only think of revenue possibilities, but as these various proposals get bounced around, and I think there's going to be a lot of them in the upcoming session, that there's a ready body to look at them and to react, because it's going to be fast-moving. That's what I would urge people to urge their counterparts in other municipalities at the convention and afterwards. The two legislative action request forms are attached. I'm open to any questions you might have.
Well, first of all, I want to thank you for the very nice write-up that you did on the two legislative action requests. I found that your arguments were very persuasive, and I think to the extent that we can through this form, be as persuasive as possible. I think you've done that. And secondly, I also want to thank you for making the dual emphases with the municipal revenues that you did. And I think it is very important for MML both to have this permanent entity that will look at revenue issues, but also, I think your point, making strongly the point that MML needs to be involved even in advance of the discussion that takes place during the regular legislative session is a very good point. And I don't, it's kind of hard to figure out how MML is going to formalize that, but I think it's, it's not too soon to bring that up. I assume that there have been some informal discussions, but I, I think that MML should take a more formal approach to that, and I agree with you that it really is going to have to. Most of the discussion around the remedy to the state's structural deficit is going to be done on sort of an informal basis, and it's really, really important that MML be part of that discussion. So I completely agree with those two emphases.
It is true that a lot of the discussion amongst state legislators has already begun and will be very strong starting in September. So waiting until, until January, when the session begins, is almost too late. For that reason, it may... For that reason, it may be, I don't know enough about the inner workings of MML, but there may be an opportunity at the convention to jumpstart that a bit structurally. I'm not sure how that is, but any talking about it and insight that you can find in your discussions are welcome.
Well, I am, my last board meeting is going to be the Sunday before the convention begins, and I'm planning to bring this up as an issue and sort of see if there has been some consideration and if the board would sort of give the staff direction to sort of proceed with that. I think that would be important to do.
Thank you, Mayor Porter. Susie, I really appreciate, as Mayor Porter said, the work you did in pulling this together for us and the format that you presented it. I think, I'm getting kind of tired of seeing the opt-out electrical aggregation come back and back as a priority.
I'm sure it's in MML as too.
I think it would be nice for us to succeed so that we can move forward. I mean, this is obviously something that's good for the community. It's good for the people. And it's unfortunate that the corporations don't like it, but maybe that lets people know how good it is for the people. I wonder if there's maybe some information you could provide us on this, such as which representatives are kind of in the gray zone that we could maybe influence? I know there are certain representatives at the state level who have supported this every time it's come up, and then there are some who are firmly against it, but I wonder if you could help us to identify who the state representatives are so that when we're at MML, we can be talking to some of their constituents that may be able to help move them along a little and help them to see the benefit to the community of having the opt-out aggregation.
Yeah, one of the things that is distressing to me is that some of the people who have traditionally been the first to submit legislation for this have retired from the state legislature. So we do need to, I'll find out who are our strongest people that are still there and see if we can't focus on them as a building block and then identify any obstacles.
Where the swing boats are that we can get.
Right.
And that would be helpful if we had that information before we go to MML so we can, I guess, talk to the...
I'll check. Candace Donahoe of MML is very familiar with the folks that I'm finding.
I think Candace actually provided the mayors with some similar information, and so I think she can probably do that. The other thing that I think is important when we're talking to other municipalities is you realize that deregulation sort of has not proceeded all at once, but has proceeded area by area. And the interest of municipal officials in this issue peaks when their area becomes deregulated and they see what happens. So I think that sort of looking at some of that, and I think Candace has that information too.
And certainly Martin Gatzchak is very knowledgeable.
He's very helpful.
He was quite involved the last couple of years, both in testifying and also advising me and Larry Giomo about issues.
And I know that the Sierra Club has been supportive of this, so maybe we need to think about how we can work more closely with them. Thank you.
Are there other questions for Suzanne? The resolution is before the council. We are sort of having to do the work session and the resolution simultaneously because of the time.
Well, we did do a work session on June 4th.
Another work session? Sorry. Because we need to get this in by, what's the deadline?
By 29th of June.
Okay, which, and that's, we'll be out that week, so the resolution is up before the council. Does someone want to move the resolution?
Should I move it?
Second.
Okay, it's been moved and seconded. Any additional council comments? Any public comments on the resolution? All right, seeing none. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? The resolution passes. The next item on the agenda is a resolution regarding the FY '08 open space allocation. This is the sort of thing that we do to divide up the open space monies for the fiscal year.
I wasn't the one that put this together, but I can speak to this briefly. Each year we do get a certain allocation that's kind of funneled through park and planning. This year, last year, there was a very large amount, about $455,000, and that was kind of a special effort by Governor Arlitt to show his support of green facilities. For some reason, it's also a very large amount this year. I don't know that there's a particular impetus or goal on it, but the city this year would be receiving about $315,000 through the program Open Space. For any program open space development project, which primarily goes to fund parks, park equipment renovation, and quite a lot of money has come to the community center for its facility, the city does need to put in 25% of the total project cost as its match. Each year, we also need to submit what's called an annual program to Montgomery County and the state that identifies the projects that we would consider using the money for. This is not a commitment at this time to do the project or to issue a contract, but if this isn't kind of on the books, then we have to go through extra bureaucratic steps at the last minute to say that this is an allowable project for the use of the funds. So this is a regular step to get us on the list that the county submits to the state as projects for this area. The recommendation this year is the Jackson Boyd Playground renovation and Jackie Park Ball Field renovation in addition to sprinkler system. And then the balance after that would be $206,000. It may be that the city could choose to use that on the renovation of auditorium if that's something that you desire, that's previously been determined to be an allowable use of funds.
And we do need to specify uses for the funds, and so even though the council has not made a decision on exactly what we're going to do, I think it's an appropriate thing to allocate the money toward because in all likelihood, we will be doing something. We have to see what the options are and how much they cost before we make a final decision. But as you said, we can allocate it toward this use, and if the council, for whatever reason, decides that's not a good use, we can reallocate it.
Right. We don't need to spend it on the uses that are here, but if the uses aren't on the list, then it's more difficult to get.
Right. So are there council questions? Does someone want to move this resolution?
Should I move?
Okay, it's been moved and seconded. Are there any additional questions? They're coming from the council area.
Thank you, Mayor Porter. I certainly think both of these parks are in need of renovation, and so I support those. I'm on the other side concerned about specifying the remaining balance for council chambers and auditorium renovation because of the amount. It's over $200,000, and I think that would be a misuse of funds to put that much money into this auditorium when there are so many other priorities that we might think about. I would like to modify that, not just to specify council chambers, but to open it up to the community center.
That's already on the list from the past year, so that can be a continuing project. This, so this kind of the gymnasium addition, for example, of the community center was approved, was listed on the program Open Space for the last year. We've not spent the full amount of money that was allocated for that. It's something that we can add on to with the funds.
I see this as just...
But I was just letting you know.
Yeah, I understand. I appreciate that, but I see this as just really opening the door to spend that money rather than put it towards the priorities that we have previously So I would just like to remove that item from this list.
Are you essentially proposing that as a amendment?
Yes.
Is there a second to the amendment? You're seconding it? Okay. There's an amendment to, simply, you're talking about simply removing council chambers' auditorium from the list?
Right, right, in this resolution.
Bruce?
I will be voting against that amendment. I think it's a good idea to put it on there. It gets it on the eligible list. We still have to have the discussion about what we might want to do. It's not making any commitment or any allocation. I think it's a reasonable thing to do to put it on there with other things, and we can talk about the mix.
Okay, Joy?
I agree. I think trying to hamstring the renovation of this space is unfair. Certainly, there is the discussion to be had about the gymnasium, but this space can be renovated in the meantime, and I fully support this contract going forward and that initiative happening.
Any other comments, Ruben?
Yes, I too support putting this on the list. I do agree that the amount is quite beyond what we are, as well as agreements contemplated spending on it, so if the amount had any, I would be very uncomfortable if the amount had any validity as to what we might spend. I don't want to think of it as a ceiling, but with that caveat, I'm certainly comfortable with having it on the list.
In the resolution itself, there's not numbers next to those items. And I, as Suzanne mentioned, what we're simply doing is giving notice to the state, county.
To the county and state.
Both of them, that we would like to have these items considered for open space funding. And at this point, although the staff, obviously, in doing the draft, looked at what they thought might be numbers for those items, but we're not committing any specific numbers at this point, although at some point we obviously will, but we're not doing it at this point. Are there other comments on the amendment? Okay, the first vote is on the amendment. The amendment is to remove council chambers' auditorium renovation from the list of items that would be included as projects for the fiscal year 2008 program Open Space. So a yes vote on this is a vote to remove those items. All those in favor of the amendment, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? No? No.
Appears it doesn't.
Oh, okay. I didn't hear your vote. I thought maybe you were abstaining. Okay, so it appears that the amendment does not pass. The next vote would be on the resolution itself. All those in favor of the, I'm sorry, is there any public comment on the resolution before we do that? Okay, the resolution is before the council. All those in favor of the resolution, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
No.
All right, the resolution passes. The next couple of items have to do with the Board of Elections, and I don't know whether, Jesse would like to introduce them?
I'd like to say a word or two.
Sure.
Just to introduce it. The council established the Board of Elections by ordinance 2006-36 to assist with planning and conducting city elections. The board is defined as having four to seven members. To date, three individuals have applied to serve on the board. They have all been interviewed by the city council. This year's city election will be held on Tuesday, November 6th, and the nominating caucus will be on Tuesday, October 7th. And planning is already underway for the election. So staff has recommended that the council make appointments to the Board of Elections at this time, and also we recommend that you reduce the number of members required to form the board from three to seven, four to seven to three to seven. So that's the purpose for the ordinance.
Okay.
Could I just suggest that, I believe what we've done in other situations, I'm aware of the Montgomery College Neighbors Committee having a similar question about it, but we've said that the committee would consist of, say, three to seven members, with none of this specificity about at least and no more than. From what I understand, in the bylaws of any committee that is council-appointed and that passes those bylaws, there can be some indication of what it would mean if membership fell below the, you know, the three or so forth. So I believe that's a better way for the committee to have a little bit of say-so about what to do in the situation of their membership numbers. And this, to me, seems like we're getting quite specific at a time when maybe it's not necessary.
I'm not sure I understand what the difference is between what you're suggesting and what's written here.
Saying at least three implies that if there aren't, I understand what we're doing here. I'm simply saying that if your committee membership fell below three, if you didn't have bylaws in place saying what would happen if that minimum was, you know, if membership fell below that minimum, then it would hamstring the committee from really even needing to vote on bylaws. To me, it seems useful to have some range of numbers, but not really that critical to specify the minimum and...
So you would be suggesting that the Board of Elections shall consist of three to seven members?
That's right.
Rather than saying at least three, but no more than seven?
That's right.
The Board of Elections has a very specific function. It's supposed to not just conduct the elections, but also set up procedures for conducting the elections. And so I presume that having the Board of Elections, you know, there has to be a decision-making body. It's very critical that that, and so I don't have a problem with the way it's written now because I think that, I'm not sure that it would be advisable to have election regulations and things established by a group of fewer than three because that is so critical to the functioning of the city. And I don't have an objection to the way the city clerk has suggested it, and I think for something like the Board of Elections, I think that that might be, having that specificity might be more necessary than it is for other groups that sort of have a recommendation-type function.
Certainly, this is an issue we can take up under the consideration of city-appointed committees, and I hope that that will be forthcoming. I believe I saw it tentatively scheduled in July.
We're trying to do at least one more discussion of city committees in July before we go on recess. Would you be comfortable for this particular entity of leaving it the way it has been suggested by the city clerk?
Yes.
Okay. Are there other council comments on this, concerns? Okay, we're going to take up the first reading of the change in the ordinance regarding the Board of Elections and then do appointments, which will obviously, until we do second reading, the three individuals won't be actually empowered to act as the Board of Elections, but we will go ahead, I'm going to go ahead and schedule the second reading as soon as possible.
Should I move the ordinance?
Yes, you may move the ordinance.
Thank you.
Okay, it's been moved and seconded. Is there any additional council discussion? Is there any public discussion? All right, seeing none. This is the first reading of the ordinance. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? That's the first reading of the ordinance, and the next item is the resolution appointing members of the Board of Elections. As the city clerk has noted, there are three members. Is there anything particular you wanted to add to this particular, before we do this particular vote? The council has, as Jesse mentioned, the council has had an opportunity to interview these three individuals. They all have a fair amount of election experience. I think we're fortunate to have people with that much experience be willing to serve on the board.
Should I move the ordinance?
Okay. It's been moved and seconded. Any additional council comments? Any public comments? All right, seeing none. All those in favor of the resolution, please say aye. All those in favor of the resolution, please say aye. Aye. Opposed? This resolution passes. We are running a bit ahead of schedule, but that's good because we've got some larger discussions. The council will now take a short break before coming back for our work session discussions.
I think if the council, I think we are waiting for, since we are ahead of schedule at this point, and since no one ever expected the council would be ahead of schedule, we are still waiting for one of our guests for the next item on the agenda. So I think the thing to do is probably to reverse the order of the last two items and take up rent stabilization first and then go back to the discussion of the HOC's proposal to purchase property. So I think that that would be the appropriate thing to do. As the council will remember, we have discussed a number of items under rent stabilization, and we have essentially one final large policy issue to decide, and that is the number of units in a building that exempts the building from rent stabilization. The council has already made a decision to change the current law so that rather than the number of units owned by a particular property owner, it would be the number of units in a building that would affect whether the building was included under rent stabilization or not. And as we left it at the end of the last discussion, there were two proposals on the table. One was to exempt units, exempt buildings of one unit. The other was to exempt buildings of four or fewer units. Those are currently the two options on the table, and that is, in fact, the only remaining large policy issue that the council needs to address. Yes, did you want to ask a question about the information we received from staff?
Mayor Porter, before we begin this discussion, I just would like to clarify for anyone who watched last week, and I recuse myself from the discussion, that this week, because of the issues on the table, that regardless of how it's decided between these particular issues, it does not affect me as a landlord. So that's why I will not be recusing myself tonight.
Okay. Did you have questions?
I do. Sarah, thank you for this table. It did bring to mind a question when I saw the number of rental facilities in Ward 1, and that is, I believe, the 187 units at the Victory Tower building are exempt from rent control. So are they included in that 391?
They should not be.
But we're not sure.
Not, they're not, they weren't on the rent stabilization list.
Okay, thanks.
And you had mentioned that this does not also include accessory apartments or other units that would not be included?
Correct.
Okay.
What I've done is, there was a chart that was included in the original agenda packet, and after Councilmember Snipper had looked at it, he had prepared some additional information, and I've tried to combine the two. The information that Councilmember Snipper had distributed, kind of gave a sense of where those individual units were distributed on a ward basis as opposed to citywide. And the information I had provided you focused more on what the impact would be on a ward basis, or, excuse me, on a citywide basis. So for example, if you were to take underestimated impact on rent stabilized units, if you were to go down to option three, which was rental facilities with two, three, and four housing units, the line that's highlighted gives you a sense of all of the rental properties in Tacoma Park, how many of those would be impacted on a citywide basis? But if you were to go to line 3D, for example, in Councilmember Snipper's ward, 37% of those two, three, and four unit facilities are located within Ward 5. And as Councilmember Siemens has noted, in Ward 4, there would be no properties that would be impacted by that particular option. I've also broken it out into sort of a graduated level, so while you've been looking at just one unit versus four or fewer, I took the step of going, well, if you decided to exempt two and fewer properties, what the impact would be? If you decide to go three and fewer, what the impact would be, as well as the four and fewer?
Okay. Are there other questions about the chart?
Thank you. I would just like to point out to my constituents in Ward 4, who may be watching this and not have the luxury of having this paper in front of them, that there are, the current discussion of what we're talking about on the number of, the types of buildings that we're going to exempt from rent stabilization, does not affect any building in Ward 4.
Correct. You tend to have the larger of the rentals.
We have larger buildings, and none of those are being discussed tonight with this discussion.
All right. As I said, as we left it, the last discussion, we had two proposals on the table, one to exempt buildings of one unit and one to exempt buildings of four or fewer. Would any council member like to comment on either of those options? Ruben?
Yes, thank you, Mayor Porter. I appreciate the staff work you've done on this. It's very helpful for me. I'm not going to repeat the arguments I made before, except to indicate again that I do note that Ward 5 is sort of disproportionately affected by the proposal to change the number of units that are exempted. And several folks in my ward have told me that they found that unsettling, at least. And then others have mentioned that the 439 units is a lot of people. If you think of these as having two and three people in it, in a family, you can easily imagine 800 or 1,000 folks affected by this. Barely a substantial number of people. And so that's why I continue to support keeping... And so that's why I continue to support keeping what I think of as the current law arrangement with the change in definition, because I do think that preserves our commitment to affordable housing. And again, I support working to simplify as much as possible the petition process, the hearing process.
I would just like to add that I also continue to support the exemption for a single unit. In addition to the points that Ruben made, I would like to make a couple of others. Across the city, it's a fair number of units and a fair number of people, and we have to assume that these units would permanently leave the group of affordable housing units. And I think that there's a lot of logic to exempting just one-unit buildings. Single-family homes are different in a number of respects from multiple-unit buildings. We have property owners who have rented out their homes while they were out of the country for a period of time, and those, those types of rentals aren't rentals, sort of ongoing income rentals, and they're also not very good prospects for affordable housing, because they're often larger, single-family homes, and wouldn't be affordable in any case. And so I think there is a logic for exempting single-family homes. But once you get into two or three or four-unit facilities, they are, in fact, buildings that are designed for rental units. And I would agree with the suggestion that Councilmember Snipper made earlier, that we should do everything that we can to assist the landlords of smaller units to, you know, run their businesses in the most efficient way they can. I know that the Small Business Administration has offered some assistance to small business owners within the city, and I think we could get some assistance for people, some advice, and some courses that would be helpful. But I think that weighing this on the other side, and this whole process is a, is a, has been a process of weighing, on the one hand, the benefits to tenants, on the other hand, the benefits to landlords. And I think that the, the cost of the loss of affordable units across the city for going with exempting four units, four or fewer-unit buildings, would be too high, and I think we have to take that into account.
I see it a little differently. I think we can still have a large amount of affordable housing. It doesn't all have to be under the same policy. I liked Colleen's idea of coming up with some kind of fee structure for those units that are exempt, and coming up with that pool of money for supporting affordable housing in many different ways. I think the difference that the mayor talked about in terms of the type of building, I think, can be argued that it extends to, up to four units. I think those units, those buildings that have up to four units tend to be smaller and managed by, in a different way than the larger units are. They tend to be small business owners, individuals. I think there's a kind of a qualitative and quantitative difference in the smaller buildings. And I haven't changed my mind. I'd like to see us exempt up to four units.
Colleen?
I concur with Bruce. I think there are certainly illustrations of the threat to affordable housing on the, on the other side of this. For example, I was a homeowner of a home on Carol Avenue, and it was a two-unit building, and we lived in the, in the first floor, and then we rented out the second floor. That came off the rental market when we sold it to a single family for use in that, in that respect. And if we had instead been able to keep it and rent both of the two units while we moved to a less busy road, then there would still be two affordable housing units in, in a very high-demand area of Tacoma Park. So I'm also aware of a, of a house that, I heard about this, and the, it was just staggering what rent control had done on this two-unit house. And for a while, the owner had lived there, and the rental unit had been at such a very low level of rent. And once the owner moved and then rented out the other part, then rent control applied. And one of the units was, you know, it was also in a very desirable part of the city, and the rent that was being paid was not even a fourth of what the market would, would bear for that area. So it's, it's those kinds of situations where, because of our decisions here as a council, we are, in some ways, threatening affordable housing in, in other respects. And I would agree that the four-unit exemption is a good, a good action for this council to take. I think that attaching a fee to those units does provide some funding for some of the affordable housing initiatives that we talk about, but right now, the, the general fund is, is paying for all of them. So I would like to see us exempt the, the four units.
Thank you, Mayor Porter. Like I said, this is a difficult decision. It doesn't affect any of the residents of Ward 4, but yet it does affect, potentially affect many of the residents of the city who live in these rental units. I think Councilmember Williams and now Councilmember Austin Lane also mentioned, you know, charging a fee for those units that are exempted. But to date, I haven't seen an actual proposal on the table for doing that, so it isn't something we can vote on, which leaves me with the decision tonight of exempting a single unit or exempting four units. And I have to turn to Councilmember Snipper's compelling argument about the lives that were potentially affecting, and so I will support the single-unit exemption.
Any other council comments? I think since pretty much everyone, I believe Councilmember Barry had put his, his preferences on the, on the table at an earlier meeting, and so I think at this point, since everyone seems to have made a decision, we can, as I count it, we have four councilmembers in favor of a single unit, and three, and I'm counting Colleen, because she has been clear about what her preference was, three in favor of four or more. I'm going to proceed on that basis. We, we don't need to take a recorded vote this evening. We need to give the count, we need to give the staff some guidance as to how to write up the final ordinance, and the recorded vote will be on the final ordinance. But on the basis of what I'm hearing from the council this evening, I'm seeing a, essentially a preference by four councilmembers for exempting single-unit buildings, and a preference by three councilmembers, kind of Colleen, as I said, who was clear about her preference, for exempting four or fewer. So I think at this point, we can direct staff to proceed with drafting the ordinance with single, single-unit buildings exempted. And as I said, we will continue to have discussions on this. At this point, it's looking like, and maybe I can look to Sarah to see if this is still the case, it's looking like we will probably have the public hearing on the full, the council discussion and the public hearing on the full law on the 16th, that we're still talking about the 16th, rather than the 9th, which would have been our previous estimated date. We're still working with an estimated date, but I hope after meeting with the city manager and the city clerk tomorrow, that we can nail this down a little bit and have a fairly firm date for the public hearing. We are also still trying to get the draft of the ordinance out to the public and to the council. We are still aiming for two weeks before that date. This will give the staff and the, our consultant a little bit more time to do it. But we will have the public hearing, most likely, on the 16th. There will also be public comments taken at both the first and second reading of the ordinance, which at this point looks like it will be the 23rd and the 30th? Am I getting Mondays right in July? So there will be opportunities for comments. And of course, as soon as the draft comes out publicly, members of the public should feel free to contact members of the council, the city clerk, with comments on the ordinance itself. So that's, that's the direction that we're heading at this point. And there will be opportunities for public comments. So we can, we can, we'll have adequate opportunities for public comment.
Mayor Porter?
Yeah.
As, as is our policy under work session items, when a council member requests that a member of the public be recognized, I would like to request that the gentleman who wants to make a comment be recognized.
Okay. Would you like to make a comment?
Yeah.
Can, can you, can you identify?
My name is Richard Schorle, I'm a four-unit apartment owner on Lincoln Avenue, and I have, for the past 10 years, watched the rents not as, not increase as much as those in Montgomery County. Ms. Porter wants 100% of all the rooms, apartments, rent controlled. You, you say there's a cost. What about my cost? You don't even look at my cost, being, supplying low-income rent. You guys don't recognize that I'm the one that provides this, not you. All right? And, and we're talking about 12%. How come we have to do, give 100% of our rental stock to this low income? Why can't 88% be enough? Why do we have to give everything, and nobody else in Montgomery County does anything? And my rent is $500 cheaper than any one-bedroom apartment in Montgomery County. And I don't see you making any inroads in improving my situation, especially with global warming coming, the cost of fuel, and all this disruption. How can you make adjustments to my rent so fast that it won't hurt me? You are hurting me. And you have, you probably have a house here that's worth $800,000. My house is bigger than yours, and it's worth $300,000. There's my investment. I made a big mistake living here in Tacoma Park. And anybody along here can tell where a rental property is in the city. They got garbage cans out in front. Why don't you give them a chance to improve their property? Let them get a decent rent for that. Then we'll have something to look at. Right now, here we are in Tacoma Barrio. That's the way I feel. And this, and you have not provided any method to improve the situation. We're going to keep like this, and next time we talk about it, we're going to be $1,000 less than any apartment rental in Montgomery County. Why do you do this? We're only talking about 12%. I don't know why you're such a...
I, I understand that you're frustrated.
Yeah, and yes, because nothing's going to happen. We're going to keep on going in this little hole, this depressed area, while everything else is built up. There's a single-family house, people have, have the benefit of this place, but you don't allow me to have the benefit of this place. And I can't even afford to fix the place up, not at these rents, not with the, when I'm paying $6,000 insurance, $5,000 for heat, and I'm only taking in $21,000, plus all the other expenses. You don't recognize that. You haven't made any allowances for the rapid inflation, or whatever's going to happen in the next 10 years, we're going to have hell to pay, and there's no way for me to keep up with this.
Well, I would be happy to talk to you about some of the changes in the law that would benefit property owners. All right. My suggestion is that we, do we have the folks from HOC here? We don't? Do you know enough about this issue to talk to us about it? Or do you, is your suggestion that we postpone it?
Are we moving on to the next agenda item?
Yes, I think we've pretty much decided the final item that we need to talk about in terms of rent stabilization.
You're saying the number of units?
Yes. There are some smaller pieces of rent stabilization that we need to decide, but I think we're going to decide those in the context of looking at the, at the language of the legislation.
Okay. The only thing I, I would add to the discussion is that something Mark Hessel brought up during public comment was that we aren't looking at who pays for rent control. And, you know, as I think through, it seems like we've looked at absolutely every angle on this, but I wonder if maybe we should be looking at that question as we move forward. From Ward 1 perspective, the people paying for rent control are the property owners, the ones especially who have properties that are taxed at a higher value than other property owners. And so this is a Ward 1 issue of interest to a number of people, not just tenants or Is that something, Sarah, that you can think of a way that we have examined? I know you have presented us with any number of angles on this, but...
Well, I, I thought Mr. Hessel's comment was asking us to look at the cost of operating a building. And I think that that's something that varies so much, based on what the property owner pays for the building, how they finance it, what kind of expenses they cover, whether they pay utilities or not. But I don't know how we could come up with a single estimate of what it costs to operate a building. I think it's going to, it's going to vary a great deal from owner to owner. The other thing I think is that, I understand the gentleman's frustration, who was recently speaking, but there are a couple of changes in this law which would benefit him. One is that we have set the annual increases at 100% rather than 70% of the CPI, which is going to increase the amount, the rate at which his rents go up. It also greatly simplifies the petition process for arriving at a rents based on inadequate net operating income, which, I don't know the gentleman's situation, but it sounds, from what he says, like he might be eligible to participate in that petition process and raise his rents if he really can't operate his building because the rents are too low. That's exactly what the petition process for, based on net operating income, is designed to do. I'm, I'm sorry, he sort of didn't allow me to explain that to him, but my guess is that he was sufficiently upset that he probably wouldn't have heard me anyway. But it does seem that there are several things that we've done that would have, would benefit him. Those are two I can think of right off the top of my head.
Terry?
Thank you, Mayor Porter. One of the things that struck me tonight is Mr. Hessel was talking earlier, is, you know, the idea that, you know, rent control is not working, but I think if you look at the evidence, rent control is working at its goal, which is to provide affordable housing. And I would certainly be interested in entertaining any information that, that Mr. Hessel has about other communities and the, their approaches to providing affordable housing for their communities, and, so that maybe we can learn from that. But at this point, I think what we have has been working. It has needed some modifications, and that's why we've been discussing that over the recent months. But I don't see a... But I don't see a, a better alternative. I'm not aware of a better alternative. And so I think, you know, we keep moving forward with the way we are. And, and I appreciate the work the staff has put into trying to address the issues like we heard tonight.
Are there any, before we move on to the next item, are there any additional council comments? As I said, the next thing will be the publication of a draft ordinance, which will be available for public comment and council review. And then we have a tentative date of July the sixteenth for the public hearing. And I'll try and firm that up with the city manager and the city clerk in our meeting tomorrow, because I know that the staff very much wants to publicize the date for the public hearing so that people know when it's going to be and can come to the council with any comments they have. Okay. I see our guest has arrived, and so we will move on. We, we got a little ahead of schedule, which is somewhat unusual for us, but now we are moving on to the discussion of the HOC's proposal to purchase property in Tacoma Park.
I'd like to introduce Mr. Peter Engel. He's the Assistant Director of Real Estate Development for the Housing Opportunities Commission. HOC is investigating the feasibility of purchasing one of the rental facilities in Tacoma Park off of Aspen Court in Councilmember Clay's ward. And they'll go into a lot more detail. The building is currently vacant.
Okay.
Good evening. Let me first apologize for being late. I had your move on. I was, I thought I was on time and I hit Silver Spring and there was some very large teen event going on and I could not cross Georgia Avenue, so I was just stuck there getting aggravated. We're talking about seventy-four, twenty-three, twenty-five, and twenty-seven Aspen Court, which is one building. We actually each with a different address. It's sixteen units, mostly two-bedroom units, one-bedroom units. And there was one unit in the building which was marketed as a three-bedroom unit, which wouldn't be under county code, I think, because it reached the third bedroom and had to walk through another bedroom. It's a solid structure, a concrete building, so in terms of the building itself, it's in good shape. The systems could use a lot of work, and it is vacant. It's for sale. There's a contract that's been signed on it. And under county law, HOC, the county and any tenants group has a right to match that contract and to purchase the building. We're looking at this one partly because of what it is and where it is. Often something this side, we don't usually go after. It's fairly inefficient to do a sixteen-unit building, but it's on a court. If you know this court at all, there are three rental properties on the court. There's this property, there's an eleven-unit building directly across the entrance, all across the court, which I think is in pretty bad shape. And then there's a third building, about twelve units, I think I could be wrong about that, at the end of the court, which is undergoing some sort of conversion to condominium right now. But my understanding, actually I spoke with Councilmember Clay earlier in the day, is that she doesn't think that's proceeding apace right now. I think when you look at that product and what's there versus the rest of the neighborhood, it really looks like it would benefit from some capital infusion and some money and really cleaning it up. I can understand from the council member that there's a, there were a lot of drug problems in the area. HOC owns and operates about sixty-five hundred units around the county. We do have some just public housing, but the vast majority of what we own, about five thousand of those units are mixed-income apartment buildings all over the county. We have everything from high-rise, Class A in downtown Bethesda, to some troubled stuff that, you know, should be, we're looking to fix up in other areas. We have a lot of scattered site individual condominiums and townhouses around the county. And we really, overall, we really push for a mixed-income type development usually. Not everything, but that's the standard model. And we think what would make sense for this property. There are a couple of options we're looking at, and we're on a fairly tight timeframe under the right of first purchase, but we're either looking at preserving it as rental, keeping it rental, and doing some affordable market rate mix, somewhere between forty percent, fifty percent affordable, probably someplace in that range, and picked it. And, you know, really what goes into that is partly what I think you would like to see, partly what the county would need to provide funding for this, would like to see. And what we really think makes sense from a policy point of view, from all that input. The other option is to convert it. And with the two-bedroom units, it's a better target for conversion and then sell it as essentially workforce condominiums. You know, my guess from what the purchase price is, that we would buy it for and what we're estimating fix-up costs to make the project work, we'd be selling units probably between two and three hundred thousand dollars. Hard to get below two, I think. And I don't think you'd need to get above three. So we'd be looking somewhere in that range. And again, I wish we had harder numbers at this time and I could give you something that was a little more solid, but that's the kind of thing we're looking at and considering. From conversations with the county, they, they were interested in, I think more interested in the rental model, I think believing really that the affordable rental housing is probably in the shortest supply. Buying, there are more options, but still not great. When I talked to Councilmember, Councilmember Clay, she thought, you know, just from her brief conversation, she was, the community might be more interested in the for-sale model. I can tell you now that the rental model would cost a lot more. We would need more subsidy from somebody on that. The for-sale model you could probably do at breakeven or maybe make a little money on it to use for the next project. The rental project, what that market could support in terms of what you can actually go borrow and actually pay real debt on is pretty low. So you'd need a lot of money, you know, soft money that would only be repaid if you had some way to repay it to make it work, which is a fairly common problem. This one is fairly heavy on the soft money. It's largely that the rents, we think the market rate rents in that area frankly, are not really much above, or probably are around where the fifty percent of median rents are anyway, someplace in that ballpark. We haven't done a detailed market study at this point, but that's just from looking at costs and what things are going for in the area. That's what we're doing with it or what we'd like to do with it. We would need a resolution from this body to move forward ultimately. We don't do anything in a municipality without the municipality's okay, partly because it's what we'd like to do and I think it's also a law. And I'd be happy to answer any questions and we'd ask you for your support.
Actually, before I was mayor, I was council member representing the ward in which this property is located. And I remember a time that this was a fairly nice property. It was probably one of the better rental properties that we had. And I know that it's, I believe, changed ownership.
It's been, this particular property owner has held it for quite some time. It had been, been active in terms of marketing and keeping the occupancy at a hundred percent.
Yeah, because I know that there was a long-term tenant who I knew, who had lived there for a number of years, and I thought that the, the ownership had changed. This would have been some time ago, and the, the maintenance was not kept up as well as it had been under the previous owner. And it's really too bad. I think my impression is that it's a, it's a fairly nice building also. I guess the, the concern, I, I understand the issue of the, of the mixed rental. I think when we've talked to people about similar types of projects, there has been a mixture of not only sort of where we are currently with rents and market rate, but there's also been some units set aside for very low-income families, which is something that is a very hard thing for very low-income families to find appropriate units. And I wonder if that's something that, in your mix, you would consider is not just sort of where we are currently in market rate, but where we are currently in market rate and even lower income setting rates for some of the units at even a lower level.
I mean, that, that's something that we usually, if we can, we like to do. We're building a project in Wheaton on top of the metro station there, which we, project-based housing choice vouchers. So we have fifty-three affordable units there and a close eighteen are for the voucher tenants. We have a real good mix there. In this case, it's something we could look at. What it would mean economically is one of two things. One, we would try to get some vouchers and project-based, which I'm not sure we can do. There's a HUD rules on when you could and could not are frankly beyond me. And I'd go back to the voucher expert and see if that would be something that would be possible. That would be one method. Lacking that, what it would mean is you'd essentially be making less in rent, so you could borrow less and you'd be looking for more subsidy to make it work. And if we get the subsidy, I'd be interested in, in pursuing that and sort of figuring out what the best, best mix would be, but that's, that's what we're going to that calculation.
Okay. Have any other questions?
Couple of observations and one question. My sense is that if you went for a ownership option, what I think we always hope to see, and I know it's hard to do, is some way of making it some kind of a limited equity arrangement so that if somebody gets workforce housing this time, they don't turn around and somehow kind of make all of the profit on that, on that first sale, and then it goes out of affordability much more quickly. So any, any way to set up a mechanism to...
Yeah, I think, I mean, that's something we'd be interested in as well. And, you know, one of the, there are a couple of methods for that. One is to, is to put a second loan on it in one form or another. And when the person sells, you know, the, the version of this I like the best personally, there are a bunch of them, is that they essentially get, so the property sort of gets divided financially, and they would get any, they would get whatever percentage equity increases they have on the piece they really own outright. And that other piece, the equity would get split, and that would stay with that loan. And so then whoever owns that loan, whether that would be us or the county or however that's done, has the choice to either try to get that money paid off and then you put that money into another unit someplace. Or often I think what would be better is you just keep it in that unit and it stays there. So really the piece that gets bought and sold is the smaller, some portion of the total price. But one way or another, I think, you know, we'd be, we'd be strongly concerned about not keeping it affordable. You know, the MPDUs in the county, a couple of years ago when they were reviewing the law, they, you know, the report was that they had produced thirteen thousand or so overall in the history of the program, and a close about three thousand were left. And a close about, we own, we own half of them. And for those of us who work in this business all the time, the lack of hard units, you know, to stay affordable one way or another is a real problem. When you put all this money into it to make it somehow work, then to think that you don't keep it for the longer term, one way or another, affordable, really rubs the wrong way. So I can tell you, it would certainly be our goal to find, to make sure that we could find a way to keep them from just being flipped two or three years down the line and somebody walks away with a large profit and then it changes price. That's not what we're after.
If, if you can make a model like that work, I think that would be very desirable. As I listened to the mayor talk about her sense of the history of that building with rental and a, and a possible change in ownership and the, some deterioration there that seems to take in place, it, it just begs the question in my mind, will she maybe, maybe if there was a change in ownership, maybe they didn't make it work partly because of the way things are set up in Tacoma Park and the discussion we just had about affordability and rent control possibly contributing to that. So I, not, not knowing whether that's the case or not, but it does beg the question.
But the first owner was under rent control too.
Yes, but maybe the change in ownership and however it got priced then and their loan, et cetera, they had higher costs and maybe the accumulated effect of rent control over a long period of time made it harder and harder. But that's not this discussion. So I guess what I'm left with is if there's that ownership opportunity with a, with some type of model that you described, I, I would be very happy to support that.
Thank you. You know, my first preference would be to keep it as rental units and to certainly provide rental units for some of the lowest-income people in the community. But it's kind of ridiculous for me to sit here and tell you from the Housing Opportunities Commission what makes sense and what doesn't make sense, because you have, HOC has a proven track record of not only doing things correctly, but also of having your heart in the right place. So I kind of defer to you on, on how to make it happen. I think your, your goals are, are certainly in the same vein as mine, and so I look forward to seeing what you come back with in the future. Thank you.
I appreciate the comments and just say that it's, it's helpful and I actually think in this case, in some cases we go and we have a vision, we know what should be there, and we'll just try to, we'll try to make sure that happens. In this case, I think there really is some room, and having your views on it is, is very helpful and important. Appreciate hearing what, you know, in all ways, what, what you'd like to see with it too.
Yeah, a little bit of clarification. What would happen if HOC did not purchase it? What would happen then? Would the, would existing contract go forward? Is that, is that what happened? Do we know anything about the existing contract?
We had met with an individual that was interested in this building. I don't know, did he enter into a contract?
I agree with that.
He, we're not, we had, prior to HOC's expressing interest in the property, we had met with an individual who's looking at acquiring it, whether or not they entered into a contract, I do not know. They were looking at doing market-rate condominiums at that particular property.
The, there are two different laws, fifty-three A and eleven A. One is right of first review and for just sale, the other is conversions. And here if they're buying a convert, it should come in under eleven A and have a slight different set of requirements. This one came in under fifty-three A, so either they couldn't understand the law or they weren't planning to convert it. Frankly, looking at what it is for somebody trying to do market rate from what I know, I, I mean, I was surprised by that because of what they paid for and what the contract price is, that somebody would be trying to convert it. So it's perhaps possible they weren't aware of the differences in the law. I mean, the price looks like a condo conversion price.
In spite of my disagreements with Councilmember Williams on the issue of rent stabilization, I do agree that the points that he makes are valid. The council, we've had two things that we've tried to do in terms of affordable housing. One is to maintain affordable rental housing, and I think we have made some good progress with that. I think we've made less progress in terms of affordable homeownership opportunities. So I would be very happy to see a continuous affordable rental housing. But if you decide based on your analysis of the property that affordable homeownership opportunities would be a better way to go, I think it would be an interesting thing and I would certainly be interested in, in how you would manage to do that. And I am also very interested in limited equity opportunities. The, the city worked with a co-op that purchased a building that was going to try and keep it affordable, but the building, for a number of reasons, proved to be too expensive for them to continue with. But that's another thing that we've had some experience with. But we have yet to come up with a successful model for maintaining affordable ownership, homeownership opportunities. And I would be real interested if, if you decide that it's not really feasible to keep it as rental housing. I would be interested in ways of maintaining affordable homeownership opportunities.
Well, we will look into it and if, actually if you're interested, at some point, talk to staff. I mean, there are other, there are certainly other models for that out there in the country. And Howard County has a version of it, and a lot of people do it in different ways. So just talk to people about how it's done in general too, if that's something of interest.
Okay. Any other questions or comments? I assume that the council is interested in moving forward with the resolution approving of the proposed sale.
Thank you for the resolution.
I'm seeing basically yeses. So...
If I might ask, including the agenda packet is a resolution that was prepared by HOC's attorney, which is what they will need to proceed with the proposed purchase. Unfortunately, they need it a week from this coming Friday, which is before you meet next, because you have recess next week or you're at MML next weekend.
They need it a week from Friday?
A week from this coming Friday.
Well, there's some disagreement over whether we have to have it before we match the contract or not until, before we close. And I'd rather err on the side of making sure we have everything in place, but...
If we did it Monday, is that going to be, not, no, not this coming Monday, but a week from Monday, which is the... week from Monday, which is the following?
Two weeks from tonight.
Can we do a letter?
Right, two weeks for tonight. Is that going to be, I mean, the, the difficulty is that we haven't advertised this as a, as a decision that the council would make this evening. And we're not meeting next Monday night. So the next meeting we would have would be July 2nd.
Well, I'm, I'm not sure if this would satisfy the, the legal requirements, but it might make some progress towards that. If the, if the council as a whole is comfortable with it, we can prepare a letter for HOC's benefit saying that you chatted about it this evening.
A letter of intent type of thing?
And that the consensus is that you support their purchase of the property and renovation of it for either option depending upon which makes most economic sense. And that you anticipate adoption of the attached resolution on July 2nd?
Could be the next time we could do it, yeah.
If you, if you're comfortable with that, we can, we could do that and that may or may not work, but.
Is it possible that, you know, because of the extenuating circumstances, that we could convene a brief meeting on Friday, which gives us time to announce it, but it's before we leave the city for MML and, and discuss the resolution at that time, consider the resolution at that time?
Actually, I think if, if Mr. Engel is comfortable with it, I think that Sarah's proposal makes a certain amount of sense, that we can do like a letter of intent, which is not.
He was grimacing though, so I thought it might not be.
It's, I, the, the goal for me is to keep this as challenge-free as possible. And, you know, the law has a somewhat unclear on timing when we need a resolution provision. So I'll, I think a letter would help somewhat and then the resolution shortly after the, or we've got to submit the contract by a week from Friday. Well, at least that's, you know, the date. So if we don't have it, you know, it, it means that it opens up some room for challenge, hopefully very little and hopefully we'd go through, you know, and we've not been challenged these in the past, but it's always possible. So I was, and my goal is to shut that down as much as possible.
I would, I would like to err on the side of, of safety and, and just doing a, an emergency meeting on Friday that had, to consider the resolution. Not predicting what we will do with it, but consider the resolution at that time.
My suggestion is that we leave that issue open. I'd like to do a couple of things. Maybe you could check with your attorney or we could check with our attorney and see if we can find out more about this. And then we can also check on the availability of council member's schedules.
I'm available Friday.
Yeah. That's what I'd rather do too.
Or Thursday, I mean, it's.
As I said, I, the, the other members of the council, a council member, Austin Lane is concerned about her schedule. I don't know if there's other council members who are concerned about their schedule also.
Yeah. All effects. Yeah, I just find it kind of a, it's not concern about my schedule, but it seems like a slapdash approach to the, the council meetings. And I, I would much prefer the letter of intent that Sarah proposed. I think that makes perfect sense. The resolution can be attached and our agenda on July 2nd could include it.
Well, I think, if I could just leave it open, I think we, we will see what we can do. And if we can do something prior to then, we will. But we, we can at the very least give you the letter of intent, if not something more formal.
I appreciate that. I know, you know, I'm, we're here at the last minute on this and I was late to do so. Sorry for that. Wish for too much, but I appreciate it.
Well, we, we also appreciate your, your working with us on this. And I know HOC has done a number of good projects and, and we appreciate your work with us on this. And we'll try and see if we can't make this work.
Thank you.
And if we can just get, if there's any indication back from your folks that we really do need to do something in a more timely fashion, then we just have to try and go there.
I'll push the dual in councils and see if we can get a single answer.
Okay.
Thank you very much.
Well, well, thank you for coming. We appreciate it. If there's nothing else, we're joined.